Welcome, everybody, to the October 17th, 2023 meeting of the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is new business, Smiley &amp; Associates LLC. Anna Claudia designing the BEC. They're making a change to their sign at 60 through 78 Mill Street. Okay, you want to just show what? I understand it's the same size. It's still the BEC, but you want your individual names on the sign.
Correct. So the BEC is kind of the display area that we have, which we change out the front edge every quarter, but both of our respective offices work in that office space, if you will.
And so you want to have that?
Correct, exactly. So yes, the same.
So instead of the BEC, it's going to be?
It's going to be both of our firm names.
Both of your companies.
Correct.
You want it to be in that same reading from up?
Yes, because otherwise, we wouldn't be able to get the whole thing on there, all the words.
And the lighting is everything the same, nothing's changed?
Correct.
Do I have any questions?
Doesn't exceed the area, nothing.
The exact same.
No, literally the same. And again, I apologize. Just the words change, but that was the only change. No change in size, no change in space.
Just sorry, for the minute, it's your name, sir?
Aaron Smiley of Smiley &amp; Associates.
Aaron, thank you.
Sure.
We have a motion to approve the sign change for Smiley &amp; Associates. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Jeff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item on my agenda is the Chamber of Commerce at 23 East Market Street. Would like to, I believe, have a sign on that door. Are they here tonight? Paul was supposed to be here. He was sent the agenda. Maybe he's running late or he's mixed up his Tuesdays. So we can give him until the end of the meeting. All right. He knew he was almost first on the agenda. All right, we'll move on to the... We're going to have a public hearing for Archtop Fiber. We met with them last time. We went over all the plans. I think we're quite happy with it. We wanted to get some public input, and so we required to have a public hearing. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing? I'll make that motion. You have a second?
I'll second, Darren.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We want to have a public hearing because there were a few neighbors that were... Even though we went over the decibel levels and it's really quiet even 20 feet from the generator, there were some neighbors 100 feet or so from it in different directions. And we got a letter from Andrew Moore, who is a neighbor at 3 Crossmore Drive, and he says he and his wife agree that the proposed fiber optic shed is directly adjacent to our property. We fully support the proposal of the shed station area. We strongly believe that the Village of Rhinebeck needs better and more competitive options for high-speed internet service than is presently available. Signed, Andrew and his wife Caitlin. So is there anyone here?
Sean, would you or anyone from your team like to give a very brief synopsis for the audience of what it is?
Yeah.
We've been through this before, but a very short one. If you would, come on over and have a seat.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sean McCall. I'm one of the co-founders of Archtop Fiber. We are based over in Kingston, New York. I am a resident of Rhinebeck, here with some of my colleagues, John and Tom. Tom is a lifelong resident of Rhinebeck as well. What the project is, is a competitive fiber optic internet provider to the local incumbents. So the two companies providing internet, Verizon Frontier, actually on the phone side in our footprint, and then also Time Warner Cable and Mid Hudson Cable up in Hudson and Catskill. Our project is a $350 million all-equity project. We've not borrowed any money. We're investing personal capital, private at-risk capital, to build what's called an XGS pond network. So we'll be offering 10 gig service. It's 10 gig fully duplex, so 10 gig up and 10 gig down. You can go to our website at archtopfiber.com and see our pricing, which you'll see is already competitive with existing pricing models. And we're super local. As I said, we are actually the first tenant in the IBM facility that's been closed since the '90s. And so we're bringing 100 people. We just went past 30. I think we're at 32 as of yesterday, employees in that spot. The three founders are lifelong friends and colleagues that go back to the very, very earliest days of the internet and before, actually, in the cable, television, and telephone markets. We've been doing this in extraordinarily difficult areas like Montana, Wyoming, Santiago, Chile, Warsaw, Krakow, Poland after the wall came down. So we know rural, we know difficult. I've personally been in love with the Hudson Valley my whole life, and so pitched this idea about two years ago. And here we are, two years later. We've signed our first customers in Kingston. We are building in Sagardis, Kingston. We have purchased several old phone companies, Germantown Telephone, Hancock Telephone, which have been in the same families for over 100 years each. Warwick Valley in Orange County. And we are creating a ring around from the Berkshires, from Pittsfield, Massachusetts, all the way down to mid-Orange County, all the way over to the Delaware River, and down into Pennsylvania, and back up through Binghamton and around. So it's a ring where we're building out and all using private capital for all of the denser areas. We're upgrading these older phone companies to the latest technology. And then ultimately, we are partnering with the counties and townships to fill in what we call the white space in between. As you would probably see in the press, there's been a lot of talk about public funding for areas that are not economically viable to invest privately. And so we will partner with our counties, both Dutchess and Ulster and Sullivan County, have all signed agreements with us to see where we can make sure we get internet to everybody that currently doesn't have it. And that process started just about a year ago now. As I said, we are operational as of this, you know, this lead this month. And we will be building approximately 200 miles a month for the next 18 months to get about 3,000 miles to 160,000 locations, including Rhinebeck, Red Hook, Tibbely, all the way on up to Hudson and Catskill and over to Pittsfield and Lennox and Great Barrick. So it's a large, complex process with lots of zoning board issues and poll permits and lots of that. But we are here. It's fully funded. We don't, we're not at the mercy of interest rates. So if you come over to our office, you'll see 22 million feet of fiber sitting in a yard waiting to get hung up on poles right now as we speak. So I'm happy to take any questions. Is that appropriate?
Yeah. So just explain what this will mean to Rhinebeck Village.
Yes.
So over on East Market, if you can just explain what this installation will be.
Happens to, yeah. So our network is all dielectric, which means it uses no electricity down the lines themselves. We shoot actually laser light down hair-sized fiber pieces of glass. But that light that gets pumped down those fiber optic lines needs to be regenerated every 20 kilometers roughly or so. This is a regeneration site, which is just a simple closed building with a generator on the side of it. Inside, there are routers, a lot of blinking lights, and a lot of fiber splicing. You know, we hope to never be there. The only time we really need to go to these hub sites is frankly when something isn't going well, which we hope to be as frequently as possible. I have gone over a year without having someone enter a hub site in my career. This is the Rhinebeck site that will serve Red Hook and Tibbely and down into some areas in high, all as far south as Hyde Park. And you know, all the way over to the bridge and all the way as far east into Dutchess County as we decide to go when the public funding really reveals ultimately the extent of our network. But if you go to our website, you will see the map of where we're going to invest personally, which includes everywhere in the Village of Rhinebeck.
And it's located uphill at 187 East Market Street, up at the back of the parking lot. And it'll be like a big box that'll be lowered by a crane. They've agreed to put like a wooden fence around it, evergreens, deer-resistant evergreens around it, so no one will even know it's there. And the decibel level of the generator, which will be on during a power failure or for five minutes a week, you know, I asked them to do it like at noon or something on a Wednesday. So it just exercises. But what did you say? At 20 feet, the decibels are?
So at 23 feet, the loudest it is is 70.4 decibels. And that's from the front of it, which is facing the building currently.
Which is similar to a?
A vacuum cleaner is at 75 decibels. So require a vacuum cleaner.
And we got the correspondence from the county. They reviewed the project, and their recommendation was the department recommends that the board rely upon its own study of the facts in the case with due consideration. I've already made some comments about fiber optic sites. So the county doesn't have a problem with it. So is there anyone here for the public hearing that could comment on it?
We do have some drawings showing the?
If nobody's here for it.
Wooden fence and all the things you had asked us to do.
We've already seen it.
We've seen all the wooden fence, and it's going to be, you'll barely see it. They don't want it to be seen. They might even know it's even there, because this one's to be hidden in the back. And we were only concerned to have a public hearing because there are some neighbors adjacent, not adjacent, but like 100, 200 feet away, that might hear some. But a vacuum cleaner at 40 feet or something is not.
Yeah, exactly. By the time it gets to their house.
As I said, it's only five minutes a week or so.
And the wooden fence will be surrounded by this landscaping.
Which also serves as a baffle, has to the over the day and the, you know, so.
So is anyone here about Archtop? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion that, Jeff.
I'll second that point.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I think we've heard everything. We've seen the plans over and over again. We made some changes, and we appreciate your effort to conceal it. And we said we didn't want to change the fence with razor wire around it. And so it's going to be fairly noticeable out in the woods there. So does any of the board have any questions about it?
Hold on, Chair.
Yes.
You have to vote on the neg deck.
Okay. Do I have a motion for a neg deck? I'll make that motion. You have a second?
I'll second, Darren.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Ian, just a quick commentary is that when you first came in, you had a chain link fence with barbed wire on the top and much smaller plantings. And now we're at version three, and we moved to a wooden fence with some six-foot-plus tall arbor vine in front of it. So I think the applicants moved nicely in the direction of making this even more concealed than it already would have been based on location alone. So I think that's worth acknowledging.
Yes, we appreciate your efforts.
It's our pleasure. We have always been very enmeshed in the networks, in the communities that we serve. And you know, we look at this as a good first step, so.
Thanks, Sean.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve Archtop Fiber site plan?
I'll make that motion, Jeff.
You have a second?
I'll second that point.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
The numerous visits to us.
Ryan, I have the updated drawings.
Paul, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, you are here. So let's do this quickly. What they want? Chamber of Commerce wants a sign on your door.
Should I approach the bench, Your Honor?
You have it? They have a hanging sign now or they?
No, they don't have a hanging sign. We have a small sign to the right of the door currently. I've got area chamber.
Yes, a little sign that you want to put on the door. That's for going to square footage allocated?
Yeah, it's all called out. There are just little pieces of vinyl, and that's how we... If you go to the page before that, I think there's an accounting of all the door graphics. Yeah. So we've painstakingly measured out all those elements since they're on glass. And the way that we do windows and glass doors in Rhinebeck, it's just big drawing box around, you know, the graphic itself, you know, what that represents. The gray material on the inside is applied on the inside of the glass. It's a frosted film to kind of conceal an area at the bottom of the stair landing that they use to store basically promotional materials and chamber newsletters and things at the bottom of the stairs, just on sight, to just try to screen that off. And then the other text, the purple text, and obviously the suite number is on the face of the glass. So they're foregoing, I think they're foregoing. They wanted to do a hanging sign at one point, but I don't know that they need one.
There's no lighting there.
There's no lighting, no.
The application shows that the signage is within the allowable amount for the site. There's no illumination, no other issue.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I don't think the suite number counts in the calculation. John's the expert on this idea tonight, but I think.
Even with it, it's under new funds.
It's under the, that sort of direction of 23. I'm not sure about the phone number on the website either, but it looks fine. Anybody have any questions for Paul?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the sign for the Chamber of Commerce at 23 East Market Street?
Motion that, Jeff.
Second?
Second, that point.
Michael, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Last item on my agenda is a public hearing for 810 Chestnut Street. Before we open the public hearing, there was a sign-in sheet there. If anybody in the public would like to speak about this, you can sign in. We're going to have a three-minute limit today. So just to give you a brief history, we've had this for a while. We were moving along, making some progress, and then the applicant, everybody knows about it, from all the papers, dismantled the house. And then now, for the past few months, we've been trying to rebuild from there and get back on track with the project. So I'm going to have the applicant give a little presentation on it. And then Jeff and, I mean, Darren and Michael went over there this morning to review it. The zoning reinforcement office has been going over there periodically to check to make sure the progress is moving. I'm going to ask Darren, after you make your presentation, have Darren and Michael say what they saw today, and then we can open up the questions. Select shops. Okay? You're on.
Far that I sit, stand, what's your? Delighted to sit.
Jeff.
Just why don't you get your?
It's better if he sits or stands.
I think we can see, let's, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. David Steinmetz from Law Firm of Zarin Steinmetz. I'm pleased to be here tonight representing Samantha, Samantha Koenig, in connection with 8-10 Chestnut. You all, obviously, are familiar with Warren Temple Smith, a project architect, as well as Ken Landers, our project builder. I am normally in a variety of communities, too many nights a week, usually standing. So first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to sit. And I'm usually in front of different communities on new construction, new projects, whether they're large or small. The occasional adaptive reuse project, which is always fun, challenging, and a little different. And this one is really, for me, really a treat and something that I enjoy. And that is the historic preservation and reconstruction, rebuilding of this lovely home originally built in the 1880s. I'm going to be very brief. You all approved the site plan in connection with this unanimously on December 6th of 2022. Construction proceeded with Ken and Warren in connection with the permits and the approvals that were granted. The house was not demolished. I appreciate the chairman's use of the word dismantled. Indeed, it was. It was taken apart so that it could be cared for and carefully reconstructed. Unfortunately, as you all know, and I assume at this point the public correctly understands, unfortunately, some detrimental rock was experienced by Ken, and we believe the contractor and his team acted responsibly. We're very much pleased, however, that Mr. McLaughlin, who I wish was going to, wish was here this evening, when he issued his official determination, he concluded that the house had not been demolished. And in fact, I had a chance to meet Ken when I was here on August 24th, along with Board Member Davidovich. And Mr. McLaughlin was not only kind in terms of his words with regard to Samantha, but he acknowledged that the care, the effort, the expense, that Samantha, that Warren, and that Ken went to really doing everything they could to preserve this gem. I'm really pleased that we have a photograph of what the house looked like and what the house will look like. For us, it's a testament to the fact that this is something that's a love for Samantha and for this team that really obviously cares an awful lot about historic preservation. That's why I say to you, for me, this is a treat, because there's an awful lot of development that happens in the Hudson Valley, and it's not taken with this degree of seriousness. On July 26th, Mr. McLaughlin and the Village issued that determination. The determination from Mr. McLaughlin and the Building Department was that we would make a resubmission to your board, that we would come back to process a site plan before you. It remains our contention that the site plan is what you originally approved. We were asked to, and we have amplified details associated with that site plan. Appreciate the care that you all have paid to the details. I know you've asked, you've put Warren to the test here of demonstrating his measurements, his details on the structure. And I think in turn, that kind of keeps the pressure on Ken Landers to deliver what we're all looking at. We appeared before your board. My colleague Lee Lefkowitz is in here, as you all know. We believe we submitted what was asked last Thursday. There was a submission made. And as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Davidovich and Mr. Gee were out there yesterday and conducted a follow-up inspection. For the benefit of the record and the public, I think those of you who have visited the site, I've had an opportunity to see the garage and see the various items that were carefully dismantled, using your word, preserved, protected, housed inside the garage so that they can be replaced and reconstructed. So we're now in a position, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, where we are hoping this evening, your board can conduct and close your public hearing. We are anxious to secure our amended site plan approval so that we can continue, along with the Building Department and the professionals here in the Village, to complete the construction of this, as I said, of this gem. It's going to take some time. Samantha's already spent a fair amount of time, effort, and energy to get it to this point. I think Ken could speak better to the duration. I think some of you probably know that there's a lot of work that still has to be done. We are asking, Mr. Chairman, that again, that you conduct. We're here this evening. If there are specific questions for the development team, we don't have anything more to offer other than we believe you're getting precisely, precisely what you all unanimously approved. We're proud of that. And I know, I speak for Samantha. We're proud that she's going to continue to be a productive and happy member of your community, living in a delightful home on Chestnut. Beyond that, I have nothing further to add. And unless you have questions, our team is here for you to conduct your hearing.
Before we go to the public hearing, Darren, Michael were there yesterday, and I'd like to get a question.
Sure. I'm happy to start. So yeah, the purpose of our visit to the site yesterday was, at the last meeting, well, let me backtrack. So in Mr. McLaughlin's letter, there was a request in there for 14 pieces of additional items, information about details that would be put back on the house. And the purpose of that was so that the planning board could be comfortable in knowing what we were getting at the finished product stage. And the applicants, as Mr. Steinmetz indicated, made a submission. There were some questions about the submission. There were just some measurements and some details that we weren't quite understanding or weren't quite called out. And there was a suggestion made at the meeting that we do a field visit so that we could look at some of the original details in person, some things that are a little bit harder to capture on a plan, take some photographs, put rulers against things. But most importantly, take the plans that were submitted and compare them to some of the original details from the house that had been stored in the garage and in other places on the site. So that was the purpose of going out into the field yesterday. And prior to that visit, the applicants actually made a resubmission, which was again referred to. And that resubmission actually had quite a bit more detail. There were quite a bit more sketches in it. There were quite a few more measurements, and there were quite a bit of photographs in there that weren't in the prior submission. That really helped us even before the meeting get a sense of what was being proposed. So the meeting really turned into just asking a lot of questions about some very minor points of those details that were in the submission. And then there was quite a bit of conversation just even about just approach, the way the construction would be approached, some of the fasteners that would be used, some of the materials that would be used more specifically. And with the exception of, I think, two revisions in the plan that we came upon, one relating to the exterior siding and one relating to a dimension called out on one of the brackets that would be used under the bay window. And we can clarify those a little later on. Everything seemed to be, you know, well detailed, well intended, and either onsite for reuse or captured in enough detail that at least I was comfortable seeing that, you know, they could achieve what they were setting out to do, which is recreate any parts that might be missing or had rotted away, or detail some of the newer sections of the house to match some of the pieces they have from the older sections of the house.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that.
Michael, yeah?
I just, Darren, pretty much said it all. I mean, back in July, when the house was dismantled, one day it was there, another day it was gone. And then we were getting lists from Darren and Warren about what was there, but nobody except for Darren had seen it. So there was kind of like, is it really there? Has it been put in a dumpster? Is it going to? So there's that kind of unknown. And when I went yesterday, the garage is full. It's all the stuff that can be used, that will be reused and rehabbed and done, and all the measurements we did with everything. I'm quite comfortable, you know? I'm just thinking a year from now, this building will be done, and it'll be the next Connie Baffert House on the street, and everybody will be happy.
We were able to get an estimate of, obviously, you couldn't save everything. And do you have an idea of how much you'll be able to save? And if you're going to need new material, are you going to put it on the back of the house that can't be seen from the street as a plan?
Sure. So we were able to save quite a bit of material. The front porch, for example, all of that gingerbread trim, the post that'll be on the front porch, except for the two that were kind of half posts that were attached to the house, where they were severely rotted. The four front posts are all the original posts, the gingerbread's all the original gingerbread. The front doors with all of their trim, that's all original. The shutters on the house, I think I went through, there's, with the addition, there's 19 sets of shutters on the house. We have 15 sets that were part of the original structure. And they have their hardware, they're in good shape, all of that. So there will be four additional that I have to purchase. One will be on the back. The other three will be split between the east and west side, but as far back on the structure as possible, so that everything you see on the front of the house is 100% the original. And then it kind of peters into new as you go down the side. Then just kind of the additional materials. There are certain items that I know were specifically on the list of items to keep that were just in severely deteriorated condition, which I implore them, I think they saw yesterday. But like the gable details where it has the sunburst were in severely rotted condition. And so we've still retained them so that we can go back. And Ken is brilliant with this, that he's going to hand carve them so that they look exactly as they were. They are, you know, the same reliefs, the same dimensions. But that, otherwise, there are other details that need to be recreated, particularly that came around the roof lines, like the crown moldings or the rafter tails, just due to expensive rot. But those, as we indicated last meeting, are not only being replicated exactly as they were, so that the soffits are done exactly as they were, so that everything looks the same. But we're actually, of the salvageable members of wood, particularly, that came out of certain sections of roofing, that dimensionally actually meet the needs of these rafter tails, we're creating as many architectural... we're creating as many architectural details that need to be created out of original material as possible so that it kind of, keeping as much as humanly possible still in the structure. I think, if there's any specific details you'd like me to address, please tell me. But it's, I would say, of the items that were called out specifically, almost all of them are in good enough condition to be reused. And that anything that isn't reusable will be exactly replicated.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for your visit, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to make the motion to open a public hearing. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Jeff.
Hold those in favor. Aye. We have members of the public who would like to speak about 810 Chestnut Street at the public hearing.
Can we get any letters or emails?
No.
We would respectfully request that the board entertain closing the public hearing.
There was no one here. Okay, I'll make the motion to close it.
I'll second that.
Hold those in favor. Aye. Okay, we had some questions about the plans. I think that I would talk to you after. A second. The picture on the front of the plans is the old picture.
Yeah, see, this is C1A1.
And it's got the single door with the side lights.
Yeah.
And then when you look further in, the picture of the building and the plans shows the two doors with the transom. But the plans... Turn it around. A1. The plan shows, I believe, it's the single door with the tran, with the, a single door with the side lights.
Are you referring to the floor plan page?
The floor plan, the first floor plan shows.
First floor plan shows, again, on A1, the single door with the transom. So we have two single doors and one double door in the plan.
So basically, C1 and A1 show the old single front door.
Right.
The elevation on A5 now correctly shows the two. For the benefit of the public, what we're talking about now is if you look at the rendition on your right, you'll notice that there are two front doors prior to this. In fact, this was just two weeks ago, in the October 3rd meeting, that we had some discussion about this. Up until then, it had been one front door with vertical side lights. Now, what Samantha would like to do is put, use the two original front doors and reuse the transom windows that were above them, but center them, right? Which we're happy to do, but that was just a recent change. So what we do, by the way, on the, on the planning board here, and sometimes this may drive people's patience, but we pay attention a lot to the details. There's a lot of moving parts here. You can see we've got five or six sheets here, and two of them contradict another one. It's very important that all the details are correct because our zoning enforcement officer, our building inspector, when they go out there, need to look at the stuff and say, yeah, that's what the planning board agreed to. So for that reason, just asking that the C1A1 be updated to reflect that.
Sure.
One other thing I wanted to mention as well, as you mentioned in the October 3rd meeting, you didn't get to it yet, so it's not in the site plan. But when you get to the landscaping, your plan is to put some landscaping in front of it to diminish the mass of stone foundation that's now much higher than the original. So, and Samantha's agreed to that. So those were the, from this very recent set of drawings, those were the only additional questions that I had on the details.
Did we discuss lighting on the porch?
So the porch, the front porch is, the original house had two small, I think they're eight-inch kind of milk glass globes that were flush mounted to the ceiling, kind of in each, where the hip of the roof comes down, with one on each side. And so I've retained those fixtures. So we're actually going to repair those fixtures. And they're going to go back exactly as they were underneath the hip roof. So it's milk glass, so it's obscured light anyway, but they also sit flush mount to the ceiling of the porch. So there's no light pollution that's different from the house as it was when I bought it.
And are there any other, any unlighting side entrances?
No, actually, so the exterior lighting plan hasn't been done yet for the rest of the house. That is part of when we come back. As I mentioned, coming back to the, exactly, trash enclosure of the garage. We're going to come back with the exterior lighting as part of that as well, because that'll include landscape lighting, et cetera, that side.
Question, heating and cooling on the house?
Geothermal.
Okay, so there's no structures outside?
No, no. That was actually very important to me.
We just want to make it correct because when it's approved, Brian Stampsen and I sign it, and those are the official plans. And then when Ken goes out, he will look at what I signed and make sure that everything that's on the plan is there and say, what happened? This is not here. This is not correct. So that's why we have to be careful with this.
So far, we have updated C1 and A1 to show the double front door. And then some sort of note about future landscaping and exterior lighting to come in a separate package, separate schedule. And then there were two items that came up yesterday while we're doing revisions. We should just revise.
Sure.
And that was on A5, that ECL3. That was the, that showed that little duck schlapp on the siding.
Yeah, so that's just a simple kind of pad swap, so.
And then this document, Samantha, that you submitted with the latest measurements?
That was my unfortunate typo, if you want to, I think it was the last page.
It was the last page there, so you were just at a war.
Yeah, just the reference to the bracket that's going to be underneath the kitchen window, which is a, this is a new item. This is, it should read that it is 1'8" vertical and 1'8" horizontal. So it's effectively corner of a square.
It's drawn that way.
Yeah, and it's drawn that way. And it was unfortunately my typo that it said 8.22.
It just says 8.22 instead of 18.22.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, I see.
I guess the suggestion I would make is maybe we can just put these into the plan set so that they have a sheet number and just reference it in that. You know, because there's no real header to it, and there's no.
That's perfectly fine. When we make these other adjustments, then we'll.
Put it in the last page.
I appreciate the hard work that was done to give all the details of all the windows and doors and stairs and everything.
Yeah, it's very detailed.
Thank you, Warren. That was good.
Likewise, with the renditions that were provided, which I'm displaying here so you can see them a little bit better. In November, we went through many, many meetings with Samantha on this. It started on September 27th. We had another meeting on October 18th where there were some changes resulting from the September 22nd. This is 2022, right? We had another one on 11/15, November 15th, 2022. At that meeting, we decided we'd go to a site visit. Michael Gee and myself went out to the site, looked at that original house, which you see on the left there, to determine which were the type of architectural details that should be retained. So for example, you'll see the sunburst transom here. And we made a list of them, which came up then at the December 6th, 2022 meeting, which Mr. Steinmetz has mentioned, was the meeting after all of those changes, we had the initial approval to that. And we required the retention of this. You'll notice there are dentals above here. There's a lot of other details with the porch and the front. We've got some great, okay, and this is the southwest. Thank you for putting these together. This is the rear. South elevation. Okay. And you'll notice, as Samantha mentioned, the detail and the columns on the original porch are maintained. You'll see now that there is two, the original house, you might mention there were, you might see there were five columns because there were two separate doors separated. Now, now there'll be four columns. These are the original columns, and they'll retain all of this. All of the shutters will retain or replace the original shutter hardware, which is the historic hinged hardware that allows the shutters, which are the correct size for the window, not fake narrow shutters, to be opened and closed. On the opposite side, we determined that there was, when the house had originally, in the left-hand drawing, asbestos shingles covering everything. When the asbestos shingles were removed, it revealed cedar clavata and a lot of detailed fish scale shingles on the side, which Samantha's also agreed to retain or restore. So I just wanted to point out that there were a good number of elements that in that meeting in November, from our report, we wanted retained. In the subsequent March 7th meeting, which was, that was the fifth time, what happened was in addition to displaying what was underneath the asbestos shingles, it was also discovered that there was a narrow double window here. One or two of the earlier cycles we went through, if you look at that original house, you'll see teeny tiny windows up here. Nonhistoric, original windows, they were put in sometime in the 20th century. Those were revealed. We went through an iteration where what Samantha agreed to was to put two windows of this size here. So there would be six windows of equal size across the top in same scale and same elevation. But having revealed that this is actually what was in the original thing, Samantha has agreed to restore that original thing. And that's why, that's why the facade of the house looks as recent as its March 7th version, which is the last version we've got, that pretty much approximates the latest. The only other major change that was made to that was the, two weeks ago, when it was moved to combine the two front doors and reuse the two transom windows. So, all right. So just for some history, that's all of the things that we went through. And as I had mentioned, some people lose their patience a little bit with us for being so detail oriented. But this community has let us know, and know on certain terms, how much they appreciate the historic district and the historic aspect of the houses. And so we've done as much diligence as we could to have that additional detail added and approve these additional items for Samantha. That's all I wanted to say.
Any other comments on the board? All right, so what we need to do as the next step is to speak to David Gordon, have him prepare the resolution in great detail that could be dealt with. We're meeting on Election Day. It's not much of an election this time. We have met on presidential election days. We meet all the time. And then David Gordon will be here, and we can deal with it. We appreciate your help. Sorry, this happened, but we're making progress now.
Making great progress. We appreciate your time and your patience. We look forward to seeing the resolution and seeing you on Election Day.
I'll talk to David Gordon and make sure he gets it to review.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the public coming.
Stickles?
Yes, as soon as everybody leaves.
We have some more business to attend if you guys want to chat.
Sure.
Wait at my gavel? It's a gavel moment.
I don't think you have to hit your gavel because of Loon's. He'll be in and out. You know, when you're serving with an iron fist and you lay out the rules, they get respected. Our Mrs. Stradling, I think it's quite enough. So at the end of last week, or a couple of days ago, we received a letter from AL Stickle LLC, Richard and Donna Stickle, to Village Planning Board. We want to replace the siding in kind on our property at 13 East Market Street, Ryan Beck using smooth white hardy board, clapboard. We submit this project with the request or the inquiry is, do we have to appear before you to go through the process?
We might change the siding.
So right now, what's existing, they believe is some kind of wood or wood base. They don't exactly know what it is. But what are they, what they're proposing is to replace it with smooth white hardy board, clapboard. And that's their, that's their request, so.
They mentioned the sign?
There was no mention of the lettering or anything on the front. So this is kind of in your guys' court on what you want to do.
So replacing wood, Samantha, do we want to come and talk about that?
I guess the question I would have is, you know, what's the reveal, right? So putting hardy board on is one thing, but is it going to be a 4-inch, 6-inch, 8-inch, 10-inch reveal?
What's there is really big now.
It's really big. I guess, what was it prior to that?
Well, that's original.
That is original.
It's like 1949. I scanned the pictures of it when, under construction. Yeah. So we can.
Bring him in, then he.
Yeah, we can bring him on Election Day, just chat about it. And then I can ask my question, my question with my other hat. Are you interested in preserving your grandfather's legacy? Leaving the sign up, we have a problem with leaving it, not counted in the side calculation, like the Ryan Beck Hard West store and other places.
Yeah, Ryan, so on the siding, the reveal would be interesting, but also the thickness of the boards, because hardy's going to have a difficult time approximating the thickness of what's there today in that wood siding.
Sure, I can certainly pass that along to them and let them know to just come, you know, somewhat prepared and they can fill out the necessary application and whatnot.
It's in the business, it's in the historic district.
It's in historic district.
It's a unique building. I think we, you know, we need to be on top of our game enough because we just said, oh, yeah, no, just go ahead. We could get burned. A chance for me to, I'm president of the Historical Society, so it's a big chance, saying, would you be willing to leave your grandfather's name out there? We have the Ryan Beck Hard West store, we have chemis on the building. We have, if you look across the street, you have a T-Bank. You can see the first section of bank of Ryan Beck letters buried to the building, even though they would take it down. So try to preserve a little history. And we wouldn't count it in the sign. They could put up upstate down signs. But that was legally required for the size of the building on hang sign or sign decals on the windows.
To my knowledge, Mr. Chair, this has nothing to do with the proposed new tenant that should be moving in. This is separate, apparently.
Because it's been in the newspapers, the upstate down moving in, but they haven't submitted the application yet. So, okay. So we can ask them what's happening on the 4th, on.
If they are forthcoming with that information, Chair, that's up to them.
No, to say the newspapers comment, you have a tenant, is that happening? Because in the past, we've had a place where they didn't do it, and then the business opening next week, and they get a sign. You said, well, you have to come to the planning board. We have to talk about a sign, look at the dimensions, the lighting. We need a sign. We're open, you didn't know three months ago you were opening your business. So I just want to make sure that we don't fall behind in another case like that, so.
Any minutes?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I have a couple, but I just did some of them to you guys because I finished them over the weekend, and I didn't even have enough time to.
Okay, good.
You'll have them by the end of this week.
By the end of the week. That's great. Thank you, Miranda.
Anybody have anything else? Anybody have anything else to comment on?
I have a kind of a grumpy comment about submissions. So something like the ARSHTOP, which we got today, the day of a public hearing. You know, we have the rule submitting things in advance. I think it's a two-week rule, right? Or maybe it'd be a three-week rule, but we've honored a two-week rule. And I understand there are certain circumstances where neighbor letters come in and things, but, you know, with applicants like that, who, you know, who had the two weeks to do it with a professional engineer, it does seem that we might want to enforce that a little more rigidly. Just, I think it's in their best interest too, that we get these plans to review with actual time to do it.
Right.
I will try to be as heavy-handed as I can be, Darren.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, what is the policy that happens in the office?
The policy is, if we're up against a big machine, and I can tell you Aerosmith is a big machine, and I can tell you when they represented AT&amp;T, when they did the cell tower project on the fairground, they did the exact same thing. We explain to them the rules, that, you know, whatever new, that you want the board to see, there is a time limit, there is a, a, a timestamp that needs to be on there, and it should be right around 10 days prior to the meeting.
And that's why we haven't, we have, Michael and I meet with Ryan on the Wednesday before the meeting, that's like six or seven days before the meeting, so that we can look over the stuff, and then we get a chance to then go back. You're missing this, you're missing that, because you asked the applicant to submit this, so we have it for Tuesday night. That's why we did it a week in advance. So we mark those things in like 10 days before, so Ryan's just to get it to us, and then we get to that and discuss it, just the two of us with Ryan. So we don't come in and then say, oh, where is it? Oh, you didn't tell me you needed that, and then we have to wait two more weeks for them to come back. So we started these meetings a couple of years ago, and we just meet a week before and have a chance for Ryan to get back to them the next day and say, hey, you better get this stuff to me over the weekend, because we, we need it for the meeting. So we try to do that, and we get once in a while, but it hasn't happened in a while, that they, you know, like we got, the Board of Health, we can't control them. I mean, the Board of Health's planning, and they just sent that in. And said, it's up to you, we, we have no comment, so.
It's, it's almost the big machine that I would want to submit more timely. You know, I get it if, you know, you're a homeowner in the village and you're cobbling things together, and you've not been through this process before. But, you know, the whole time these guys were before us in each of these meetings, it was like, can you approve us tonight? You know, we're in a hurry. But then the submissions all came the day of.
Well, Darren, I can tell you, the three gentlemen that were here, I have had zero correspondence with. All my correspondence has been with a gentleman by the name of Brendan Shields at Aerosmith.
Yeah.
And he's been the go-go between since day one. There's been no other correspondence. I have not had an email with Sean. I have not had an email with any of those PPE people to show up. So I can only do as much as I can if there's layers in front of me. Well, I only can, I only can be so effective.
For sure, and I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong. I mean, this is more just a commentary that, you know, in certain situations, we might want to decide whether they remain on the agenda if, you know, if you've asked whomever it is to submit. And we don't feel like we've had enough time to look at it.
Right.
And we always manage to, but there's going to be the occasion when one of us has a busy Tuesday afternoon, and we don't get to properly look at it.
The cell tower people at the fairground, a year or two ago, used to come and say, hey, we're licensed by the federal government, we're here as a courtesy to you.
So just something for them to think for the board is instead of scheduling the public hearing for the next meeting, you could take it out of the playbook of the town, and you schedule it for two meetings ahead.
And, I mean, you know, that's an idea, I'm not sure it will change it. I think the point here is just that, you know, when someone submits a massive amount of information, like a complete site plan the day of, maybe there's a, a procedure in place where we can say, did we have enough time? Is this too much new information, too late?
I would also suggest looking at that procedure when there's also a public hearing.
And I think public hearing, for sure, right? We need to be as smart as the applicant for those situations, and if we don't have the plan until the afternoon of...
So procedurally then, when these individuals are here like that again, whether it's a cell tower company, whether it's something in the future, I would ask all of you or one of you to put forward that if there are deadlines, if you have new information to submit for us to look at.
We have to post.
It's 10, it's 10 days. If you're after that 10 days or the day of, you might not get a vote that night.
So just to, to Darren's point then, what is the cutoff date for...
10 days.
10 days, okay, so 10 days prior to...
And usually it's been 10 business, business days, because neither Miranda or I are in the office on a Saturday and a Sunday.
And I think Ryan has...
And if, and if, I'd also like everyone to look at the agenda at the bottom, bolded, high, 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 highlighted. The deadline is October 26th to November 7th.
Right.
So if folks don't want to be responsible, we can't, we can't be responsible for them.
At our pre-meeting, which will be next week, yes.
Not two weeks from now.
Yeah, we have a three-week gap now.
Yes.
So at our next meeting, if the, if the application is not complete, then Michael and I will make a decision to take it off the agenda, if it's not all done.
Yeah, November, our first pre-meeting on November 7th.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's all fair, I mean, they're going to do the work one way or the other, it's just expediting where they do the work instead of saving it for the, finishing it on the bus.
They're panicking, and they come running into Ryan, here's the stuff, here's the stuff. Well, you missed up the meeting, we haven't had time to look at this. Well, you, you have to have time to get it out to all the board members before...
They had two weeks, and based on what you suggested to them, where was Aerosmith, you know, a couple of days afterwards with the revisions, so.
Correct, which was offense, and that's pretty much it.
All right, so that, that's what we will do. If Ryan can't give us a complete application on the Wednesday before, then it comes off the agenda.
I think that's fair, and of course, there's exceptions where, you know, somebody owes you a little detail or something.
Yes, if they have the complete application and said, oh, we're missing, or Michael and I discovered, we're missing this page, we don't have an explanation of this, they can get that in and edit on, but if this, if they're not complete, then it comes off the agenda, I'm sorry, you have to reschedule for the next meeting, you missed the deadline.
Jeff and Michael, do you agree with that, or am I pushing this too hard?
No, I, I think...
No, I think it makes a lot of sense. We had one case just with the 810 Chestnut here, where we got a lot of information. And we said at one of the meetings, well, you know, we only just got this Friday. And they said, well, no, it wasn't, it was hand-delivered on Monday. And, well, you know, so we need, I, I think it's important that if, if any of the applicants can, they should provide digital stuff that we can start looking at. For something as big as this, where it's so much to look at, it's hard to look at, it's good to have paper stuff, but to have it a good week in advance, so we're not looking at the stuff Monday for a Tuesday meeting.
At these giant plans on a laptop.
Yeah, no, I appreciated the full-size point. But to, to your point, Jeff, if they have an application and paperwork, a letter, you know, we can start to read those.
Yeah, yeah. But for sure, to have it in our hands or, or like, a week beforehand.
I mean, I can even look at the Friday before, it's just this Tuesday, day of thing, where you just really don't want to miss something, and, you know, but to your point, a week is better.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes some of us will go on a three-day weekend, and we'll be back till Tuesday.
Fair.
You know, so, but good point.
We, we can't, I mean, many years ago, it was a major project, I was feeling enormous pressure, and I spoke to a former mayor, and he said, David, you don't have a hurry. You know, you, you can't be, it's time to look at stuff. You can't be pressured by the applicants, and you have to look at it and do the due diligence, and do it within the time that you guys can do it. You can't say, we need it tomorrow. As I said, the businesses will open and say, well, you know, we put a temporary sign up. Didn't you know you were opening this business? Didn't you sign at least three months ago? Where are you? And we try to get that message out to the real estate brokers, to the property owners, that you have to communicate to your tenants that go to the planning board, your change, to change of use, you're going for a restaurant, to a retail business, you have to have a public hearing. Give the rules to your tenants, not just sign at least and take the check, tell them what they have to do, because then they get delayed in opening. And we meet every two weeks, or this is tied to three weeks, but...
Do we have any other items?
We have no other items.
If we could. Can I make a motion? Can you adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
It's not here, it's not even eight o'clock yet.
I thought we'd be in the midnight. I will second that motion, all those in favor?
Aye, thank you.